Next item is item number seven. Application for certificate of appropriateness at 72 Mid Oak Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, docket number 15-7914, block 216, lot 21. A stick frame, federal-style house built prior to 1900. This is an application to remove an existing rear yard addition and detached garage, and to construct a new rear yard addition and outbuilding.
Yeah, this will give you some idea of the context. I think I'll concede the addition. The Ryan Walsh Preservation Department staff, the property is located at 72 Mid Oak Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And the four points that should grab your attention today are the dormers at the front facade, which will be talked about very briefly, the rear yard addition, which was mentioned by Sarah, the excavation of the rear yard, which doesn't occur under the historic house and does not extend to the full, the rear of the lot, and then the construction of a greenhouse. What you can see in this area, just to sum it up very briefly, there is an outbuilding currently on the site, and it's going to be replaced with the greenhouse. This is the existing L that Sarah mentioned, who will be replaced with an addition, and then you will get a better sense of the excavation when they show a section. Take it away, Tom Bandenbaum from NV Design and Architecture. We'll continue with the presentation.
My name is Tom Bandenbaum from NV Design and Architecture. Let's see if that works. Great. So, the site is located in this corner of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, the oldest part of Brooklyn Heights. Here's the block. This corner of the Heights originally was, this is the tax photo, was populated by some of the oldest houses in the neighborhood. Henry Street here, and Mid Oak, there's the property. Many of the old woodhouses still exist, and they're interrupted by much, much larger buildings. So we have essentially a pair of tenements next door to the west, and to the east we have a firehouse and the new apartment building here on the corner. Historically, these lots were, at one point, they were much more pristine with the small houses. They fill in very quickly over the course of the last century, the previous century. Next door was, here was a sort of furniture manufacturing. Manufacturing was sort of typical in a lot of the more commercial corners of the North Heights. So you get a lot of buildings that had little outbuildings added over the course of time. So in this, originally, at least we believe, based on the Sandmore maps and historic maps, we have our house fully, with a little, maybe horse walk to the west, a larger addition in the back, and what appears to be maybe a small porch in that area, little outhouse. By '38, what's happened is that they have created access for an automobile through, and that's essentially the state it's in today. There was a driveway put through here, and currently you drive underneath the house and up and over the backyard to a three-story garage at the very back of the property. And, it's not really in the model here, but you drive up and onto grade here. So there's a full, the grade at the back of the property is essentially level with the first floor and the parlor floor in the front.
And where does the car go? I'm sorry, it goes up to...
In our proposal, it just pulls out.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. So currently it was...
Currently, there's a garage. We managed to find, with the help of Landmark staff, this photo. This is where the firehouse is today, but this is, this is the original house. And all of that's being restored, I guess is happening at staff level, or even putting back the little, with fast. This is, this is the house today. So it's currently configured in a, as a two-family, that they're very, very difficult units. There's one unit that's on these two floors, there's one that's on these two floors. There is effectively no cellar. This is, this is, this first floor is essentially a basement right on grade. It was, it was re-clad with a Landmark permit sometime, I think in the 90s, late 90s or early 2000s. The work was done as well, it looks sort of okay. It went on just raw sheathing, and there's insulation in some places, most places there's nothing. So there's no vapor barrier or anything, it's really in pretty bad shape. There's a lot of rock in it already. These are the interiors. So we have, this is, this is an important shot at the very top. This is inside, the room right behind here, and there's some evidence, sorry, of a scar here from, because it's in the position of the block form, which exists today. So that will come into play in a minute. So these are the elevations to, you know, existing and proposed. This is it in the streetscape, it's in between the large tenement and the firehouse. The front elevation. The, what's before you today is, are the dormers. The dormers, in, in the previous photos, they were showing that dormers, the framing of the dormers clearly showed that they're contemporary or were done within the past, say, 50 years, they're not original to the house, and they don't show up in the old photos either. So we're, and they're, and they look a little hokey. So what we're proposing is to reposition them slightly, give them a little bit more dimension, and we've modeled these after similar dormers elsewhere in the district. This is the existing condition. So you drive currently off the street here, up on grade, to this, this garage. These, we believe, were built sometime in the 20s or 30s. This is a concrete block, block structure, and this wall is, and the wall facing it, on both sides are concrete block. This is a wood-framed house, obviously. And this is the, this is a photo standing on that garage of the context. So you get the, the tenement next door with a, with a couple of windows, that's a particularly sad one, and then the firehouse on this side. Most of these windows are effectively blocked up. They don't have vision glass or anything, and then there's a, there's a small area way, which you can see in the model here as well, on this side, that's, that effectively is about six feet down, six, eight feet down from the level of what's left of the garden today. So what we're proposing is an addition to the back and a full lot excavation. So we have essentially a basement, stairs down to a cellar. The cellar portion has, has a ceiling that's at the old grade. So effectively, this part of the addition is, in some ways, invisible. And then we're taking the garage out and replacing it with a, with a glass greenhouse. The property line is, is here, so we're setting back off the property, the property line largely to keep this tree healthy and viable, because it provides sort of the only big, sort of significant, there's a big insignificance tree in the back. How big is that setback, Tom? I believe it's, what is it, five-fourth?
Oh, it says it's five-fourth.
Yeah, it's hard to read, four-fourth. Yeah. The, the, the house will become a single-family house. So what we, what we have is, on this level, this is a living floor that opens up to the back. Down here is basically the pool spa area. The mechanicals are buried in the middle here, and there's an entryway and access to the parking, which happens just right here on grade.
So the rear wall where there's the L that you've shown over here, that's the historic extent, right?
Yeah, this is, this right here is the historic house. So what we're doing is taking the, the brick base on the front and extending it right through the site, so it becomes a base and a datum for the whole site. All of this, then, is the masonry area, and everything above it is wood. So this is a wood, the existing woodhouse, re-clad with a, with a slightly smaller front, finer clatter. And then this is essentially a fine vertical board and batten, where the board is removed at the rails and at this screen, so that this zone, right here, effectively is an area where it's stretched. So there's glass between the battens here, and, and there's openings within the brick here to allow light in, and this is vertical circulation through the house in this area, or at least between these two floors. So these are the plans, walking in off the street. Right now, the property line is actually about six inches back from the front of the house. So there's, and because you're entering right in off of grade, there's a sort of a brunt ness to that entry. So we, we're, we'd like to reestablish the front yard, and we're, we're recessing the entry slightly to give a little relief and get you out of the rain. This is an, an open-air entry area with storage for garbage and all of that. This is the parking, driving through to this area, which is open air. And this is the real entry to the conditioned space, and that, that's all happening basically within the footprint of the existing house. You go up or down. So if you go down, this is, is storage and all of the sort of home spa stuff and pool mechanicals. And then if you go up, you come up here, and this is the living floor. So in shaded, here is the existing house, and then it's sort of divided by the, by the vertical circulation, where the kitchen dining that opens up into the terrace in the back, and a greenhouse that's connected then down to the spa below. And this is the living area in the existing house. Within existing, we've taken part of the existing stair in the house and are reusing it to get to the bedrooms above. So this is a bedroom floor with one suite in the back, across an open area, and two bedrooms in the front. And then that same stair goes up to a master bedroom suite that's occupying what is essentially the attic of the existing house, and then a setback extension on the addition. So this is setback with a terrace around that allows for width of a stair to come up to a roof deck, and we've tucked the mechanicals underneath that stair to keep all the mechanicals off this upper roof.
Tom, can you speak to the visibility of the enlargement?
None of this is visible from the street.
Okay.
None of it. So we, in the back, there's an existing dormer here, there's what, there's a scar of what appears to have banned a dormer at some time in this location, and we're essentially combining those two into, you know, one large dormer, which isn't completely uncommon in other places in the Heights. This is in the back, though, reminding you that's not visible. We're maintaining the profile of the roof all the way around, even on this side, so the interruption to that eve is confined to these 12, 13 feet here. And then this area is green room, and a green room.
So the only thing that is higher than the existing building height is the transparent parapet?
Would be, yeah, would be this rail, this is a glass rail.
When was the, sorry, when was the exit, the, the parapet that's there now built?
Parapet.
The facade, the parapet on the facade, the, the one that, I mean, your facade that's the...
Oh, the, the, the sort of green point, like...
Yes.
It was, it appears in the tax photo. So my assumption is that if that was put in when the garage was put in, but it's very difficult for us to figure out when that was, pre-'38.
Right, so at some point, maybe if you can go back to the, to the facade, I don't know if you're still on the plan, go ahead, but to the facade of the, the previous and your proposed facades.
Let me see. There.
So the left is the existing facade?
Yes.
And the right is the proposed facade?
That's right.
The left, currently, there's no chimney, or there is?
There, there is no chimney, but there are obviously fireplaces within. So this is not, this is restored, they're, they're ma, they're actually a pair of massive fireplaces within the house.
So restored to its 1915... Right, were the chimneys there before that don't exist there today?
That's right.
Okay, so...
They appear in the, in the, in the very old photo, this one. You can see a sort of ghost of it right there.
Wow, you've got that up there. I had a question about the, it's a little kind of porch over the entrance or canopy sort of...
Yeah, there's this massive guy. And that, that's under, you can count, it's, it's where the current driveway is. These are the windows on the house, and it's directly under the westernmost. And so when they, when they cut the driveway through, they demolished the original entry.
I was just curious, because a couple of the examples that you have do have a little, you know, I was wondering if you thought about including that in your, in your proposed, it's not necessary, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's certainly an improvement over this delight.
Yeah, 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 the current one, I don't know.
The problem was that now, the way this is laid out, we didn't really want to disturb this brick, which seems fine, and it's, it, to have that, we just elected, really, to have that huge bracket here, what used to be here.
I wasn't suggesting a bracket. I wondered if you'd thought of any covering, you know, in the new plan, just because...
What we elected to do is try to keep this as simple as possible, as simple as possible, recess that entry.
But I guess my question has to do with restoring to which period? I mean, precedent around, whether it's to the original or to the 1930s version, and how, and I...
I think, you know, partly the question for us and in our findings is to, to find that these changes are appropriate, and therefore I think it gives the commission the flexibility to talk about appropriateness either back to 1930 or prior to that as well. So if we feel that this, if we can harken back to an age prior to 1938, when certain things were done, then we can argue that that's appropriate. So I think it gives us the flexibility to look at this in different periods of time and think about these alterations in that context.
Okay. All right, are there, Tom, are you done with your presentation?
Let me just...
Otherwise, we can take questions.
Yeah.
Why do we take questions?
This is the, I mean, this may be helpful. This is the context in the back. This is the house that immediately faces this in the rear. This is that tree, right? These are other houses that have substantial, either complete outbuildings in the back or large extensions. This is almost full. And these answer some of the numbers about the size of the addition.
Tom, I think you've also taken some photographs of dormers that you feel that maybe you just want to show very quickly about...
Oh, you know what, they're not in this, they're in the, they're in the...
In the package, there's some photographs.
Yeah, there's a series in the back that have, that are, we went through and documented all the woodhouses in the Heights.
Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant right now? Yes, Roberto?
Just to go back to the section of the rear again, because you said that the roof line, that you've maintained the roof line, but you actually can't, well, you, you will never know, right? People, I mean, you can't, there's no way you can...
Yeah, I mean, to be clear, you're talking about that roof line there. Yeah, so...
People will never know because nobody can see it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's a picture, that's a good thing, but if, if, there's no way to ever...
You, I mean, you can certainly, if you were in the back, you could see this eight, 10 feet. It's physically there for another four, and there's some amount of inches on this side, which is negligible, completely, I would say, but it's this, this center area that's, without question, removed, that's about 13 feet.
Got it. The L is basically new, right?
Pardon?
The L.
Yeah.
That's new.
Yes, this L is new.
Any other questions? If only we take public testimony. Are the speakers on this item? Any speakers? Yes, please come forward.
Judy Stanton from the Brooklyn Heights Association. The scope of work in this application involves the complete renovation of the street facade, demolition of non-astarated, and construction of a substantial rear yard extension. The proposal also includes the demolition of a non-astarated property to be replaced by a glass block pavilion. A full excavation of the rear yard is required for the expansion of the cellar basement space. The property is bordered on both the east and west sides by taller buildings that run south nearly to the rear property lot. The house has been significantly modified over the years, both at the street facade and with various utilitarian additions in the rear. As beautiful Mid Oak Street, the proposed renovation will result in a recreated modest early 19th century row house, while keeping the existing oversized opening at the basement level to allow vehicular access to the inner parking space. The architect's selection of all materials and the detailing of the window corners and dormers are appropriate, all lending to the facade's improved street presence. This being said, we do feel that the design of the new inset entry opening and door detailing will benefit from further study and design development. We also note that though exterior window trim is shown in the applicant's wall sections, it's not shown or specified in the window details in drawing LPC 500. From the sod and roof peak back, the proposal is for nearly full reconstruction, an extension of the house, and the development of a new subgrade level that will extend to the rear property line. It is understood that beyond the basic house framing and sheathing, there is little or no historic fabric remaining here for consideration. Again, in all this new work, we feel that the architects has opted to work with appropriate choice of materials, forms, and palette of finishes, that although they are a complete departure from the period style of the original house, are successful and appropriate as an approach for the new rear yard addition. Landscape architecture and rear pavilion are also sensitively designed and contribute to the consistent overall environment of this inner part of the property. Our committee, however, does have concerns about the overall size of the addition and height of the pavilion as it relates to the small scale of the original house, the narrow lot and the neighboring properties, particularly the property directly to the south. In this case, we urge the applicant to consider elimination of the highest roof deck and railings and the exterior stair that leads to this deck, and to reduce the amount of full height blazing at the south and west sides of the third floor sitting room. We also suggest reducing the height of the pavilion and in specifying its lighting scheme, taking into account its potential impact on the neighboring property that is within a few feet of its glass walls. One final recommendation is the excavation of the rear yard be monitored closely for the potential discovery and protection of historic materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, Community Board Two recommends approval, that this application should be approved by the Landmark Preservation Commission. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, one, one thing, just to understand, I think it's important for, to understand the, the scale of the existing house. There, the, there is one floor that has a ceiling height over eight feet. The other floors are seven foot two and seven foot either six or eight. So it's, that's part of the reason for the design of this open space, to allow us to shift up and down to get the code compliant ceiling heights in these floors. You know, we're not what we have, we haven't been putting in, you know, 12-foot ceilings and 14-foot ceilings. These are relatively modest, and part of this, the idea or the impetus for this split level is to be able to push these down and keep the ceiling height, which we actually ended up dropping here to allow for code compliance within the house. The other thing that was brought to my attention that I hadn't touched on was a little bit of the material choices for the addition and greenhouse. So the greenhouse, we're proposing in a Sista block, which is solid, a flat block, and the, the wood on the addition is actually the charred wood with the, this would be the board, and the batten would be a slightly sort of lighter char on all of this.
Just on the greenhouse, what is the height of the greenhouse? Seems...
14, 14 feet.
Okay.
Where is the greenhouse?
It's this guy.
Oh.
Is the charred wood real wood?
Yes. See here.
So...
Yes.
In terms of the roof, again, and just what you see, because it is a lot of building for the, the size of the existing, so it's a pretty substantial addition, but the, the main thing for me, I guess, is just that the, the addition sort of consumes the, the little building. And I'm just wondering if there's no way to get something more visible for the roof, or to have more of the, the existing roof, since that's maybe one of the only...
From the rear, you're talking...
From the rear, even though I know you're saying you can't see it, but because, I don't know, to have something of the existing house more visible from the rear.
Right, because right now, they have about, I think it sits about four feet or something, this portion is...
Correct.
Right, and then about 13 feet is not...
Correct. I mean, the, the way it's organized internally now, the way that you get to that top floor is, is, is using the existing sort of stair within this house. So to, and you, and you sort of need that, that, well, there's an, we, we think that there was an existing dormer here that we'd like to reconstruct regardless in that area. To take away or... To take away or maintain the roof in the middle part would make circulation or use of that floor as a.
What about if you lower it?
We could, I, I think we have the ability to lower it by inches. It certainly won't go by feet.
Feet means removing a floor, is that right?
Yeah.
All right.
Because that's the seven foot two floor right now. So we're, we're, we have to, the seven foot two is essentially the height of, a little bit above that window right now. So we're, we've made a relatively thin roof there.
I think there's just a couple of things that perhaps the commission can think about, given we've seen so many rear yard additions, we've seen rooftop additions. I know the commission has looked at the combination of rooftop additions and rear yard additions together to see how much, whether it overwhelms the historic character. One of the things that I find sort of interesting is that when you have smaller buildings which may actually want to be enlarged more than larger buildings, it comes up against the commission's concerns about whether the enlargement is overwhelming the historic fabric. And I would ask the commission to think about that in the context of both appropriateness but also to some degree fairness. I think this is an interesting block because its visibility, unlike other cases, has none. There's no visibility, and it has a context of very, very deep rear yard enlargements that go all the way to, they're, in one case, I think it's even taller on one side and the other side, roughly the same height, but both go all the way to the rear. My own feeling is that, so there are two, I think, two broad issues here. One is what's happening in the front facade and whether that's appropriate, and then the second is really the, the rear yard addition. And I myself am not so troubled by the fact that this, the height and the bulk at the rear is perhaps larger than maybe we would be comfortable in other situations because of its lack of visibility and because of its context, and I think that's appropriate. Besides, I think that actually this modern design is quite attractive. So that's my feelings about that. I think the front facade, there are details to be tweaked, you know, obviously they can be, I think in general it seems to be restorative in each. Yes, Fred?
Again, in my neighborhood, so I know the building very well and the context. Brooklyn Heights is lucky to have these few remaining wood federal era houses, and most of them have been somewhat altered. This one has been very altered, I think, over time. But for me, the, for here, the immediate context is everything. Without this invisibility that is created by these two tall buildings to large, relatively newer, to, at least to the federal building, newer buildings on either side of this which hem this building in, and the fact that there's no real donut in the back of the yard because of this, to me allows this rather radical, what might be seen as a radical, although and very interesting, design, but a radical design nonetheless. In other parts of the Heights or other parts of the city, this probably would not fly at all. But I think because of its invisibility and the lack of the, of the donut, the relatively large size of this addition is really unknown to all except the inhabitants of, of this property. So I really, I kept trying to think, why, why, why and how should I be against this? And I, and I, and I can't come up with reasons that are adequate to, to oppose it. I really think it's, it's correct, but again, it's all about the context. In a different context, this would not at all fly, but here I think it, it can work.
I, I agree completely, but I, just for clarity's sake, can anyone see the back of that house?
Yes, from the back.
Just because of the walls, it's just really, it's one, it's like one person, right?
Probably the, and maybe, maybe.
People either side.
But not from the public way, so.
Just in their own backyard.
Right, from the, on backyards. But I think, again, just going back to what Fred said about what the commission has traditionally looked at when we look at rear yard additions, even in the context that they may not be visible from the street, we do look at the formation of the donut, and as we saw a case before, there was representation about how many of the rear yard additions existed, and it was less than 50%, so it came before the commission. So we do look at that, and I think this, again, is a somewhat unusual block, a very, very different one than the more traditional row, row house brownstone blocks that we've seen. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Blant's comments about this particular case, and we do see things that are somewhat similar in Greenwich Village, for example, where it's, you know, very enclosed in terms of what you can actually see at the back, and we worry about protecting the, the volumetric relationship. But the other thing that I thought here influenced me to feel more comfortable with this is the very low floor heights in the existing building and the need to try to find some way to accommodate additional use. And the fact that they preserve the roof line, even though it's not really visible, is something we've often asked for, so I felt, I feel that those factors kind of mitigate this particular situation, which is very unusual, but I think for those reasons I can support it.
Yes.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I think it's worth us all noting, here we have a single-family house that is completely clad in wood. Now, there are many applications we've seen in the past, people say, oh, you can't do it, you can't do it, therefore we have to use hardy board or some other.
Right, right.
Non-organic material. I think it's worth noting that we should kind of put a little mental bookmark on that. The other thing is, I think this is an interesting example of how zoning has produced perhaps not the best solution for the site or for the historic artifact. You know, because, because of the zoning, you know, it's kind of jammed against the house and might be obscuring a little bit more of the volume of the original structure than we would want. We've been talking about it, that it's probably okay as it is, but it's, it is the way it is because the zoning has forced it to be packed in that way, and it might have been interesting to think about if there were ways around that, how the volume might have been modified to allow for more visibility of the existing structure.
All right, yes, I.
I don't think that this is super dramatic, but I, I would go back to Commissioner Chafin's point about the canopy, and also to what appears to me to be a differently proportioned fence in the most original. And I think that the quality of both those elements, the tall fence, which has a strangeness about it, it's hard to understand whether, you know, it seems like it's really protecting the property owner, or, whereas yours has a certain kind of quaintness about it that doesn't quite sit right. So that's an issue for me, and, and the canopy as well. It's, it has a certain weight about it and drama, and I know it hasn't been there in a very long time and would potentially, I don't know, conflict with your drive-in issue. But those two elements are really, if we're going back to the most original, to the earliest version, are kind of important pieces of this facade. They, you know, it's not super critical, but I think that they're, they're interesting elements.
Right, I, I, of course, respect that. I think that even though historically, you're talking about a canopy that's over here, right?
Right, and, and the fence that's tall, taller in the original.
Right, I mean, the fence, I don't, I don't have any strong feelings about the fence. It's, that's city property, right? That's not really, so it's questionable whether you can actually do that, but maybe you can. I don't know, but.
Do you, he said, we could because they saw it in the photos, and we're not playing that because we like to do the facts that we can.
Okay. All right, but in terms of, these two, right, the canopies. They were there traditionally, but weren't they there when in fact the facade was, is it still residential at that time, or is?
Well, that's the question, yeah.
Do you know, were the canopies, can't tell. I think for me, at least, the question.
My assumption is it was, it was resident, it's always been.
It's always been residential, okay.
It had been commercial.
Okay, so it's always residential.
The canopy was obviously an added Victorian sort of feature to what was, was an earlier federal-style house, and I think what Tom's trying to do is to restore it more or less as a federal. So I think that the canopy, even though there is a picture of it, might look odd now on this.
Very simple, he said.
This whole facade is not a, it's not a restoration, it's a recreation.
Right.
So I think that, that you can really, once you're kind of off the, off of the straight and narrow of a restoration. I think you can do it, no, I think, I think you can choose what you, I think you can make choices, and I think the choice to go Victorian is one choice, the choice to go a little perhaps more low-key is a different choice, but I don't think either is more correct. I think you're, you know.
It's judgment.
Right, and I think the question is, is, for me, it seems that even without that canopy, I think the, the treatment of the facade is appropriate, and I think for the commission.
A lot of it's handled by staff, I think.
I agree.
Right, so, and I would just go to what Fred was saying about having not seen it in some sort of larger context. I have just a bit of concerns of requiring that because I don't know whether in fact it will make something very prominent in otherwise what seems like a fairly attractive facade. Are there other comments? Are you comfortable with that? Because I know you said it wasn't critical.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I'm still interested in the point that was made earlier about that's slightly, you know, overwhelming the, the house, I guess, but the, specifically as it is expressed in the back dormers or their absence, or, you know, the fact that you can't really read the, the, the original house roof line from the new house, from the new, from the addition, and whether that's, you know, important to read that roof line from the back. It seems to me it is a bit important, but again, I, I think that what you've done is quite beautiful. It's just that connection that's, that, it's a little bit greedy, like, we want, you know, as much dimension back there as we can for the square footage price.
I would say it would be more important if you had a donut that was wide open and you could really, many people could appreciate it, even in a private setting. But here, nobody can see it.
That's exactly right.
This is a scary thing.
That's really what it's going.
Other people that can see it, or the occupants of this house themselves.
I absolutely agree with what you're just saying.
FYI.
Future applicants should know that, that we don't, this would probably not work.
Forget about it.
This is not a model.
Right, and I, I think that.
There's no precedent, almost ever.
Right, and then I, I think for me, it was that, okay, if we start trying to shape this, what are we really doing and what would be the effect of that? So I think, for me, it's that I, I think simply because we have always done it doesn't require the commission to do the same erosion everywhere. And so as long as we can sort of, I think there's something very unusual about this block and its context and the existing buildings.
Totally different and unusual, because I think in some other cases, we weren't doing, we weren't requiring changes in the rear only because you could see them, we were, we were doing it because there's something.
No, absolutely, it wasn't, and very often it was in the context of also rooftop additions, and, and it was enlargements from both sides. But I would just say that there are other situations where this commission has a lot, a lot more erosion of the existing building, where you kept very little of the facade and very little of, you know, there may be row houses and have some sidewalks.
I think it's a question of how important we think this house is. It's not an individual landmark, but it is, I don't know how, maybe there's thousands of wood houses, federal houses of this period still, you know? So if we don't think that it's like one of, you know, the last one or whatever, then this doesn't matter and it sort of makes sense, but I think if we, the more important or precious or, or rare this height is, then I think even if people can't see it, we should pay more attention to.
I understand. I, I just think that, again, as a commission, we have done much more intervention in buildings before in terms of the historic fabric, so.
I, I just wanted to ask, how tall the actual total addition is in the back? I don't think it's that tall, actually.
It goes to just below the ridge line, right?
Four, what? Thirty-four? Yeah, thirty-four.
I was going to say.
It's well below the, I mean, it's fifty feet higher than it's all.
Just to get a perspective as to what we might or might have not permitted in the past, you know, so, although, you know, it's just a small building that's attached to it, it's, the addition itself is.
It's well below, by something as well.
Right, and I think what Commissioner Goldblum said is also helpful in the commission finding this appropriate because in fact the materials that were used for the enlargement, hello there, materials that were used for enlargement actually reinforce the materials that are historically found as a wood building, frame building. If you know the comments, I think we're ready to move ahead. So we will close the hearing. Okay, and we can read the resolution. Adi, would you like to do that?
Sure, let me see if I can get this right. Sure. Certificate of Appropriateness, I'm sorry, 15791472, Mid Oak Street in Brooklyn Heights Historic District. It's the application, Block 216, Lot 21. The application is to remove an existing rear yard addition and detached garage and construct a new rear yard addition and outbuilding. So we.
Can we recommend approval?
Yeah. We are recommending approval with modifications, finding that, no modifications, I'm sorry. So that the removal of the existing front dormers, rear yard addition, and rear garage will not result in the loss of any significant historic fabric, that the size and scale of the proposed dormers will be in keeping with historic dormers or on similar buildings, that the proposed rear yard addition will only be visible from the public thoroughfare at an extreme oblique angle through a narrow gap between the subject building and an adjacent building, that the proposed rear yard addition will not extend to the rear lot line or substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard, which is closed in on both sides by full lot buildings, that other rear yard incursions and large buildings have disrupted the interior of the block and therefore the addition will not overwhelm the adjacent buildings or central green space, that the proposed rear yard addition will reference the L configuration of the existing addition maintaining a full bay of rear facade and portions of the rear-facing slope of the roof, the proposed materials of the rear yard addition, including wood, board, and baton siding, clear glass, and brick are consistent with the material palette of the historic building, that the construction of a modern greenhouse at the rear of the lot is consistent with the history of utilitarian outbuildings on this site in terms of size, configurations and siding, configuration and sightings, that the proposed excavation resulting in a below-grade floor in the rear yard connecting to the greenhouse does not occur under the historic structure and does not extend to the rear lot line, that the contemporary design of the additions will be in keeping with other modern rear yard additions found within the block and the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, which reflect their own age and time, and that the proposed work will be supportive of a special character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
Any opposed? This application has been passed.